Sheriff, would you be so kind to give us a prayer?
Yes.
I mean, a prayer, I'm sorry.
Prayer?
Yes.
Okay. Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for this meeting, my God. Thank you for the gathering of these great minds that built this day as a good force to conduct county business. I pray that all goes well, that we have our ears on to this and the heart to understand and the mind to get the things done that's needed in the county. As always, we're going to continue to put you first in everything that we do because we know that's where our true success comes from. These are many more blessings we actually in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Praise the allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, roll it off. Mr. Gray.
President.
Ms. Hutchins.
President.
Mr. Gaines. Is he on the phone?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Middleton.
President.
I am here. Paige Dean is on the phone, I believe.
Yes, sir.
There she is, Brandy Lewis.
President.
Scott Slover.
President.
And, uh, Ms. Washington, are you on the?
President.
Okay. All right. Need a motion to approve the documents? This by Ms. Hutchins. Need a second.
Sorry.
This by Mr. Middleton. All in favor?
I got some questions.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President, uh, Scott, you say that the judge gave us a, uh, court order to raise those volumes from three thousand to four thousand?
Yes, the trial attorneys, so-called trial attorneys, are raising from three thousand to four thousand percent to a court order. The two lower-level preliminary hearing attorneys will stay at three thousand. Uh, there was losses of several of the attorneys, um, and I think they were down to two, and so they upped it to get two more. Uh, actually, maybe three more because Pam wasn't on there either. Um, this should be, this is something that Stephanie and I sat down with and went through. I think Stephanie is going to bring it and have a report.
Uh, my question is, when did this all just take place? Because it's already on the document there.
Uh, it took place this month, Stephanie.
But we didn't have to prove it.
Okay, so.
We don't have to prove it.
You're permitting it right now. Your options are to either appeal the pay order or to pay pay.
I, I, I don't want to.
Yes.
Heed on that, but it, it looks like it's kind of back pay to me, getting paid before it is made to us.
So, the way that our initiative defenders work, we're not under a public defender system, so the board supervisor does not set a budget. You, the, uh, initiative defenders are supposed to turn in a sheet, a pay sheet per case, and the court pays and reporting the statutes. I don't think that's what happens, but they can set on flat a map. Uh, but that is ordered by court. And so unless we do a public defender system, we don't set that budget. If you have any budget items, so we can forget, which is going to cost the county. And I think that there's no net loss, although there was some money that had to be moved from one line item to the other to make sure those go.
My, my own question is, I don't have a problem with judge court order. I'm just having a problem, when did the court order get to us, for us to already have it on the document? Have they already been working and we panel, uh, or what?
It, this would be for the work that they, that they did. Uh, they did the work and then the court orders to pay. So it's never a forward back. That's, do I know when the order was entered or whatever? No, but they can't order her advance pay after the order for the work that they done.
One more thing, I got a question about, uh, the consultant. See on here where we got some paying, still paying consultant, uh, how long is that going to go on?
So, we talked, he came in last week. If, uh, the way we kind of said it was, or looked at it, Stephanie needed to assign him work or help out or whatever, as she certainly could do that. There is also an item that our third-party auditor needed to get, Pat told us that we need to get reconciled, and so he's got that last assignment task.
My question is, uh, I understand professional service, these two trips on here from Natchez, one of them is a hundred and seventy dollars. And a trip to Natchez for five hundred and ten dollars. I want to, okay, somebody explain to me how that would.
We paid him by the hour, correct?
For an hour, I can't, I, I, we pull and see what his other.
It's a trip to Natchez, the other one say professional.
One of them could be for travel, a expense for travel, the other could be expense for his actual hours. I have to look at his invoice to see. And if he looked at his invoice, Franny. But no, one's for November and one's for December.
It's one, the one for one seventy travel and then the other one for five ten is travel?
Yes.
I would say it's the other way around, probably.
If he stayed, I'd just be speculating, I don't know what to be involved with, but if he stayed long, it would be more, you know, four days.
Do you want to, just, uh, add an ending there?
No, I, I, I'm just going to figure out, uh, if this travels or not, and how long he going to continue to, uh, do it because, uh, my only problem with it, I mean, uh, I haven't seen him in, I don't know when. And I, I know y'all say he doing some work and I believe he doing work, but why he don't never report to this board like he used to?
Well, we have to pay him to do that too. Oh, but, uh, uh.
Did you see what he paying?
Ms., uh, Ms. Washington is about to get up to speed, and I, I, I think they only have a few more loose ends probably that need to be tied together from the last year.
At this moment, if the ball was, if Stephanie thinks she needs him.
Is she on the phone?
She is on the phone, that she can ask him to do this, that or the other, I think it's that nature.
Uh, Ms. Washington.
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, you aware of what's going on and you still, uh, need his service?
Um, Dean, when I first got employed, I was told that he was willing to stay on. Um, I've only worked, um, this is my third week now. Um, from my understanding, he was working with, uh, Keith to get some information, uh, where it is and with the tax assessment, so, um, I don't, we're needing, needing him beyond this month right here, but, um, this is, um, I have to be with, with God and Brady just to see if they cooperate with it.
Okay, it, other than the tax.
My only question is, uh, with the work that he's doing, uh, are you part of that too?
No, um, he gave me a report telling me the financial, um, what he has done before I got here. And it was pretty, he gave me all his files last week, um, so I think, um, I would need him occasionally to, to, to not at this point be on this line. Um, I believe I can get everything from Brandy and from God.
I'm just going to recommend that he do, continue to do whatever he do, he's worked with the county administrator, uh, and not come here to do work and, and, and give her no paper or whatever occasion I be, she is the county administrator now, so they need to work. To me, they need to work hand in hand, if, if he's coming here to continue to do work as a consultant and doing accounting administration, some work, thank you.
And that's, that's what was suggested and done. The only thing left that, and she would not be, you know, doing this, neither are Brandy or myself, is that issue with, with tax collector. He's going to wrap that up, which county needs, once he's done, he's only going to do work and sign by Stephanie.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, take a vote, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any names? Eyes have it. All right, special presentation. Anybody got a special presentation? All right. Down to county business. Mr. Howard here. With the court. He is, did he show up? Being tamed with sanitation? Before sanitation? Um, come back Sheila Watson. Inmate transportation?
They probably wouldn't expect us to go this fast.
Oh, no, probably wouldn't expect us to be here on Thursday either.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, Milton Cranny?
Here.
All right, I'm going to step out.
Actually, Kevin, would you stay because I have some questions for you. I mean, we're not voting on anything.
He cannot even be involved in discussions.
Okay. All right, well, we'll have to find out, I guess, after the fact. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, last time I was here, we talked about this proposed oilfield waste disposal site that Kevin Wilson is proposing on property that he owns. Uh, it will be a business that he owns in the south part of Adams County. Once again, I am asking Kevin to please locate this somewhere else, not in the county, and in, in an industrial area. There is a historic church right across the road on Schuylsboro. They can't move their church, but he can choose to build this somewhere else. Yes. So, I've been doing some research. Uh, Scott, there's a guidance for modifying a local solid waste management plan that is a fourteen-page document from MDEQ. Are you familiar with that?
I think I've seen that document.
Okay. It outlines, uh, the seven steps that the county must follow for implementing or changing this solid waste disposal plan that the county is required to have by state law. Mr. Gaines, at one point, you had expressed a concern about the board of supervisors, that this wasn't something that was determined by the board of supervisors. Actually, it is determined by the board of supervisors, and it's outlined in that document. So, um, I'm sure that Scott can get that from MDEQ. If you would like me to provide you with a copy, I would be happy to. Uh, there's seven steps, and, uh, as far as I know, Scott, have we started the process at all? Okay.
We have to make an application to do that.
Right.
If not.
Okay. So, are y'all aware that construction has started on Kevin's property? That's some major construction with, like, I mean, and I understand it's private property, he can build whatever he'd like to build. But if he started the facility and we haven't followed the steps, I think that puts undue pressure for the supervisors to, that he's going to want you to vote for it because he's already spending money building. And I, I just, I feel like that even though there's a process that has to be followed, that Kevin's already decided that he doesn't have to follow the law, and that he can just go ahead and build this, and that, that y'all are just going to vote for it because he's pressuring you to. And as the president of the board of supervisors, I don't think that's a good position. The optics are horrible. It's obviously unethical and possibly illegal. And it puts the board of supervisors in a very tight position. So I would like an update for the public. This needs to be a transparent process, and right now it's not. And this is really disturbing. Uh, I'm very concerned about what's going on. I know the members of that church are very upset. I've spoken to several of them, and, um, you know, we haven't even, we're not even to step one. And, and, you know, we, we have to, y'all have to advertise, you have to have a public hearing, but if it's already being built, I mean, how does that look? Or, or is anyone here aware that it's being built? I mean, and remember, you know, tax method.
I've seen something going on over there, but let, let, let me just say something. Uh, I did contact DEQ and, 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 uh, talk, he sent me some emails, and, uh, I'm just going to say this. Everybody I've talked to in the community, uh, think that this will harm the community. And as an elected official, uh, it's our responsibility to do things, to, uh, look out for the community, not to harm the community. So, uh, I, I never ever thought being an elected official, uh, I'd do things for myself that's going to hurt this community. I would never do that, and, and if it come down to anything like that, then you don't need to be an elected official. That's just my opinion. You got to put the citizen first before you put yourself first.
Well, it's actually, it's, it's actually against the law to receive financial gain if you're a, a public official. So if you're voting on something or doing something, uh, that you're the only person gained from it, that is against, I mean, that does have to be considered.
Yeah.
And that's why I'd ask if Kevin's can stay because, you know, I, I don't know what's being built out there. It's, it's pretty major. And I think it's not on my, it's not my responsibility to prove what's being built. Uh, if the plans for the oilfield waste disposal facility match the things that are being built out there, then that's what's being built out there. And I, you know, is Natchez Inc. Incorporated, is, is Natchez Inc. involved? Does anybody know? Uh, has anybody emailed or texted?
I talked to Chandler, he told me that, uh, he was not involved.
I, I just feel like there's something going on behind the scenes.
Well, I, I, I would like to say that, uh, you know, since you left, we did, uh, and, um, on, from our first meeting, that we have been looking, uh, I have had other assistants to contact me, uh, somebody sent me an email with kind of what the statute that you're talking about, but, uh, has not anything been presented to this board?
Okay.
Uh, nothing has been presented to this board, and as far as I'm aware, we left with the emergency man, nothing has been presented to our emergency management person. Nothing has been, uh, uh, proposed, uh, no paperwork submitted, because one of the things that we did say that if something was, it was going to automatically, it was going to have a public hearing, uh, or keep the public informed. So, you know, and, and again, you, you are very much aware that I'm not aware of what's going on, uh, at, uh, down there. And I mean, you know, whatever going on, we do own this private property, so I cannot say what it is. But all I can do for us, the legal side of it, it has not been any paperwork submitted, any further than that lady came here, uh, on that first time, on that, so.
Ms. Blunt.
Ms. Blunt. So I just want you to know that we, that I am doing my research, and I am aware, uh, what we can, you know, for, for our step, how we get involved, but it's no need of me saying anything or doing anything, because if somebody don't present you with paperwork, rumors can go and fly all the way around, and, uh, if you seen me a year running president, and you seen me there, I like to act on facts because you get, rumors can go all the way, and we can have a discussion all day until we put facts in place. Then we can, I, we will, as one supervisor, when paperwork gets submitted, I'll do what I'm supposed to do and make sure that the public gets aware and, and do that.
Okay, until step one is done, step one being not pull it and not print it all out so they can all have a copy of what you're talking about, MDEQ plan. Step one is they initiate, file an application.
Right.
They don't just ask us if we have any award notices, which we don't have, so any award notices. But we do have a local solid waste plan that had asked us about that. So, step one is they file an application. Until they do that, they can't move forward or whatever. And what we, with this board unanimously decided, the board who decided was that everyone, even though there is public notice application, they will make sure that y'all are notified and you're brought into law for any type of discussion.
Well, I mean, I'm sure you can see from my point of view, it looks like the project is ongoing and none of the steps are being followed, so.
And unless they get the permit, you think you're going to have issues with MDEQ?
Oh, it's being investigated by MDEQ, because there are permits required. My, my question is, uh, is this being built? That's what I would like to know.
And that's, so the county's not regulating, we don't have something, so we don't want.
No, I'm just saying, I, I can't ask Kevin this, but I, I want to ask.
He is, as the law that you mentioned prohibits him from being involved in any discussions of something that he might have a director in direct interest.
What about following the law? Does it prohibit him from following the law?
Obviously, yes, the law.
Okay. Well, I have a major problem with that, and I, and I'm sure that there are a lot of things from the county that do. I just think that as the president of the board of supervisors, that you should be above and beyond, uh, what's required and the optics, and it's, it's just horrible. So, I mean, uh, once again, before this goes too far, I'm asking that he locate this somewhere else. And for people that aren't aware, uh, with the oil industry, if he's the number one independent oil producer in the state and the city, he produces a lot of oil field waste, that's just part of that industry. Uh, so if he builds this facility, he can dispose of this at cost, take him. Then he also has co-owners, and so then he can charge his co-owners. So it's saving him money, and then he's also, it's making him money. That is, I can see why he wants to build that. I'm just asking that he build it somewhere else. I'm not saying don't build it, I'm just saying put it in an industrial area. He certainly has the means. That church cannot move. It is there, it's a historic church.
And both me and the board, this is, we're not super familiar with it because step one hadn't been done. So there's a lot of other things that go before the board. When step one gets done is when you hold the statute, hold the step.
Here's my question to the, are, are y'all going to feel pressured to vote for this if it's already being built? I mean, what if he spent millions of dollars building this?
He's wrong.
I, I, I just, to me, it, it doesn't, it, it, okay.
Now, Ms. Blunt, I'm going to say this, as a supervisor. If it's anything that's going to harm the community or the majority is not for it, I will not vote for it.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. That, that is really for us, because, um, this is very upsetting just to see that, that, you know, there are rules in place, but they're not being followed. Um, one part of that document that's from MDEQ that outlines the, the seven steps that must be followed, uh, it says the local government also may act to deny the proposed amendment due to consideration of public comments or other information received during the public participation phase.
Sorry. Has anyone from the organization been in contact with you about, or your, I'm guessing y'all have a group of residents?
We do, we have a group and it's, 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 um, it's growing.
Would, would you want to talk to that group at all? Do you think that would be helpful, answering some of the questions that are going on?
Uh, if, if y'all talk to, to the group, I'm sorry.
No, 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 we, the way we would do it is through the open meeting, and everyone would be able to participate, that's one of the, can. I'm saying, would you want to, would your group want to be meeting with this group that wants to install, you know, this operation, express your concerns?
Um, sure.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm sure that would be.
So if you'll get, and I know I got, I can get Jack's contact, but if you'll get a, for that, our administrative assistant, your contact, if you can, I, see if y'all, see if y'all can, let's have a meeting.
I would like this to be done publicly. I don't want to do it in private. I want it to be on the record.
Okay, well, I did not, the step would be they need to file an application.
And when you say they need to file an application, you're not Kevin?
I'm talking about whatever this organization is, if it's Kevin individually, then he would, if it's the, another liability company.
He needs to file an application.
To change the order, as the, as the handbook says, the first step is applicant needs to make a request.
Right. And, and that hasn't been done. So, um, I am, I do feel, uh, slightly better with Ms. Hutchins' statement. Uh, but I also am going to ask for the third time that this be located somewhere else. And also for Kevin to consider that there are rules to be followed, and he needs to follow them, especially as the president of the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. I, I, I just think, uh, Brad is not here, and the next time Brad come here, we need to ask Brad if he's invited, contacted him and stuff to do anything, because I, I can't speak for Brad. I don't know who talked to Brad. I know that Ms. Blunt was told to get with him. I, I can't say she did, or she didn't, but she need to be asked that question, uh, when he get here.
Yeah, the application would need to file with the clerk. That's all, all petitions to this board, they file with the clerk. Even if you wanted to approve it or deny it, you couldn't do it because it's not properly before the board.
Does anyone else have anything to say about the line two? Uh, Mr. Dollar, would you ask Kevin? Okay, did any of those people show up that we had on before that? Any city government business? No city, but government business? All right, the partner reports.
President.
Yes.
Ca, Ca, Scott, can I ask you a question? Did we properly advertise this meeting, man? Because a whole lot of people ain't, ain't showing up. Did we do what we supposed to do and advertise and change the meetings from Tuesday to Thursday? Just adding.
I'm not trying to check whether the advertisement's done. We recessed until Tuesday, and what should have been done is no form was called, because it gets continued to the next day.
Yes, it was, and I did call those people, I left phone, I left messages, and I sent emails out.
Thank you, ma'am. Take a look at that.
But even if not, it's still done.
Okay, the partner reports.
Good morning.
Good day, how you doing?
We'll find out. I had a couple board orders, they're not really big. Uh, St. Catherine's gravel company at two forty-seven Old Highway eighty-four was double assessed on their land. Uh, they purchased it, the map put it on with them, and then the second bill was never taken off. So they're asking for it to be removed, and the total loss would be five hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
All right, we need a motion. One more.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Gaines. All in favor? Any names? Eyes have it. Motion passed.
Hope Farm. I didn't think about it when the fire, uh, came last year to take it off the road. And the people that purchased it, uh, called me when they received the bill. And, uh, the fire was March twenty-fourth, twenty-four days after the deadline of the, uh, cut-off date. Because the cut-off date would, would have been March first. So, uh, she asked me to bring it to y'all to see if y'all would, uh, just missed the bill, which is a hundred and sixty-five dollars. Because she didn't want to take it to, uh, the lady's daughter. Hope Farm's the one, um, homochilla that burned, and.
Yeah.
She passed away.
We were a quarter, quarter way through the year.
No, twenty-four days.
March first was.
March first was the deadline for personal property, anything that's brought in or anything that's in business prior to March one of that year, it stays on the road. Well, it burnt March twenty-fourth.
So it burnt after?
Twenty-four days after it burned, well, twenty-three days after it burned.
Can we do it or not?
Yes, we can, because it burned.
Which, which, this is personal property in the house?
It was a bed breakfast, she had it as a bed breakfast. No, it's not real property, this is personal property.
So we can legally do it, so we can make a motion, and we can vote our conscience?
It's in one of the, uh, statutes, it, it basically says, you can legally do it.
I'll make a motion, can I legally do so, you want to vote with me there?
Well, we can give a comment from, from our legal counsel, uh, give him a note, or you need to.
No, I don't need extra time. I, I trust Paige, but I'll, but I'll verify.
It's one of the seven reasons.
Seven reasons.
Saved it by Mr. Gray. All in favor?
All right.
Any names? Eyes have it. Approved.
How much was it?
Hundred and sixty-five dollars.
A hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Okay.
Uh, KFG Petroleum out on, uh, Providence Road, I had them in the city. And they asked that the city taxes be removed, which was a hundred and thirty-five dollars. I, I had them under eleven hundred, and they could have been under the county code, so that's my. I, I had them under $1,100, and they just been under the county coven, so that's my fault. It was, and it's been like that for years, but they just caught it this year.
Because they originally were on, right there where God has the historic building.
Right.
For that building down.
And then they moved that, moved out to Providence about five years ago. So they've been paying city taxes for five years, but he said he wasn't worried about that. He'd just like to go forward.
Okay, we need a motion. Moved by Ms. Hilton, seconded by Mr. Gray.
$135.67.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Eyes have it. Motion approved.
The Rock Shop. Mr. Gibson, Reed Gibson, he called screaming when he got his bill. He couldn't understand my bill when, he thought I'd done, done something. And then when I totally be rendered $96,000 in inventory for the first time, that is the reason his bill went up to $7,300. Well, he said the inventory was wrong. Somebody else must have signed it. So I gave him a picture of it. He said he signed it, but he didn't mean to put $96,000 on there, and the inventory was only $30,000. So he's asking for a reduction. Total loss would be $1,879.99. He's wanting the inventory dropped from $96,000 to $30,000.
What does the tax assessor, what's your opponent's?
It's the signback day. He's got a lot of stuff out there.
Can I ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So who, who responsibility is it to go out there and, so have you been out there?
Yes.
So what you coming with?
Well, I went there on January 1 of last year. I just went out there, you know, and looked around. It's, it's pretty good bit of inventory out there. That's all that stuff, surrounding stuff he's got sitting out front that he cuts, that's on people's counters and floors.
So what, what is he trying to say? January 1, he wasn't there?
Right. He was, he's saying that he didn't have that much on January 1 of '23. He didn't have $96,000.
I'm confused. So is, is your responsibility to go out there and check this out? Is it a certain time you supposed to go check it out?
Oh, no, sir.
Well, I mean, I don't understand what he asked.
He's just wanting his tax bill reduced.
Um, how much? You said nine? $196?
No, the loss would be $1,879.99. He's wanting to drop his inventory from $96,000 to $30,000.
Mr. Slower, you got a.
Just a one more question. Miss Peggy, I ain't trying to be funny.
Go.
But what if anybody come in here and say the same thing that this guy's saying? Do we have to drop all bills down to that too?
No, sir.
Yeah, there's two ways that you can go through the statute that the tax assessor's bringing for us. Number one is if the petitioner, the taxpayer, brings it over. And if they do that, they have to do two, verify, you know, prove, so to speak, that their property was overly assessed. The second is if the tax assessor does it. The board has always given deference to the tax assessor because they have employees that go out and verify. So if the tax assessor doesn't believe that it was fairly assessed, then really, board shouldn't move it unless they can show verification that they had left. If the tax assessor thinks that it was overly assessed, then typically, board has given deference to the, to the tax assessor. Doesn't sound like there's much deference, I mean, the tax assessor thinks that it was unfairly assessed.
I personally, it's more than that.
Personally, it has to happen to tax assessor.
Yes. I mean, that, that stuff's expensive out there. Just for my counters, it's only $10,000, and I only had 10 foot counters.
Why don't, why don't the board refer you back over there and you can see what you can do?
If I can look at his books, if he can let, if he'll let me look at his books from '23, I'll come back.
We'll take a petition under advisement and correct that he hand over the books. When you're ever gonna give your assessments or challenging your assessments, this board has the right to examine books as to the tax assessor.
Right, but I have to bring it to y'all first. And if a taxpayer asking to bring it to you, I feel obligated. I tell a lot of them, no, we can't do it.
I don't think you're obligated to it because it is, the tax assessor is the one that filed the petition saying this was over, this was overly assessed.
Right.
And if you don't think of that, then tax assessor can.
It's been under.
Because they can still file it. They just have to do additional ver.
Right, right. This one's gonna be more for you, Scott. Bluff City Districts. Marsha Thompson came in. I spoke with her back in '17. They split the business. Her and her husband kept the furniture fixtures in the building, and another man took the inventory. So from 2017 to 2019, she was sending in renditions saying, "None, none. Nothing removed, nothing replaced, nothing, you know, nothing, zero inventory." This year, she comes in bringing me a 2017 rendition, telling me that it closed in 2017. However, she filled out renditions for '17, '18, and '19. She brought in a rendition telling me that where she put "none," she meant "closed." So I went back and pulled all the prior renditions, all of them say "none," you know. This is what she brought me. Here she saying that meant it was closed. She's telling me it closed in, in 2017, but she paid '17 and '18 bill. So all the other renditions said "none" also, so.
By law, we can't go back any further than 2023 anyway. She would have to do whatever other lawful sources available. You were precluded from challenging your taxes after August of the next year.
That's why I tried to tell her, but.
August 24, you can't go back on 2023.
Can you write her a letter? I tried telling her, but she just.
Can we get a motion to take your other petition under advisement, move in the direction of?
The Rock Shop.
Move by, all right. Move by Brad, seconded by Ms. Hudson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, here's an addition. Plains Pipeline. They rendered their raw assessment to the Department of Revenue. And Rachel from Plains Pipeline called me. She said, "Please, this is, this is for y'all." So she wanted to increase her assessment, which would be an increase to our road for $4,035.63.
She's agreed to it?
Oh, yes, and Jeff Borman from the Department of Revenue checked out on it too.
As long as they agree to it, it's okay. You can't increase without notifying the, the taxpayer.
She added $32,000 to the inventory.
Okay. What are we gonna do with that one? We need a motion to. Motion by Ms. Hilton, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion passed.
And that's all I have.
We read the second one, okay? Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
All right, departmental reports? I'm sorry.
Uh, I don't know if Peggy got to it or not.
What?
I had talked with Mayor yesterday. What was it, 7 Green Acres? 17 Green Acres?
23 Green Acres.
23 Green Acres.
Yeah, I've got pictures. Yeah, I went out there.
Okay, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, you're free to come to Adam County MA. I'm coming over here to update you all about the homeless shows at the Adams County Safe Room, which open Monday, Monday at 1:00, and is still remaining open to 5:00 this evening. As of now, we haven't made a decision, but most likely the safe room will be open Friday and Saturday night for, we're still below temp, and we're gonna be below temp for the remainder of the weekend. So we haven't made a decision, but most likely the safe room will be open. I want to meet you all, I know that as well. We ain't donating snacks, water, names on if you say, but I want to thank them all for donating it as well as being real speaks also. And that's all I have for the show. If you all have any questions, I have something else to say.
Mr. President, I don't have no question, but I'm just glad and thankful that these individuals have somewhere to go to get out of the cold, because, I mean, it was cold. It's a tease, and can't picture nobody being outside in that kind of weather. And I got this lady in your area, in the city, you know who I'm talking about. And the only thing she ever say before she leave this earth, she wanna see a homeless chef. You know what I'm talking about. So I don't know what we can do about homeless chef. It seem like, I don't know, maybe, Mr. President, it seem like some people that don't even live here now are showing up and out in the county, and, and they homeless. Somebody must come, ladies come to out in the county, because you show a whole lot of.
Yes, um, I appreciate all y'all's hard work. Mr. Bradford, I know the whole, your whole group from your, y'all staff was there the whole time, like you said. I don't think hardly anybody showed up to help as requested. I know Dana and I spent some time there the other afternoon when she brought, we brought some bills over there. What's sad about that is there was hardly any participation, I think, unless y'all saw a lot more people than what I saw coming in there. And we know we've got a lot of homeless people here, and, and the question was asked, "Why aren't they coming?" And, and I can give you a couple of reasons for that. It's, first of all, they don't trust authority. Because they usually have a lot of run-ins with the law and what have you. Another reason is they, they got the little tents set up there by Walmart or wherever, and they've got their stuff there, and if they leave it, they're gonna lose it. No honor among thieves or addicts in this case. And that's the other problem, they couldn't bring the drugs with them, and it's, it's a sad situation. And I'm, my heart goes out to them, because I don't know, you just step outside the other night, and you couldn't hardly stand no matter what you had on. Robbie and them were out there all night and most of the day. I'm so glad that I don't have to do that anymore. I will if I have to, but geez, I do not like the cold weather. But thank y'all.
And I also want to speak on, we had fun to actually come. They didn't say that they did come and get a bill and took some to go play today with y'all.
It's really sad that we don't have more participation than that, because it, that, I, I assume we didn't have anybody that died from, uh, the exposure scare, if I, I haven't heard of it, did you?
Not this time, but I am curious, is it, will it be cold in today at 5:00, or is it gonna stay cold throughout the whole?
It will be cold today at 5:00, because like you say, I was working around 11:00, but we have to be hungry tomorrow.
We know it feels.
But that's it on. I also would like to request travel for Robert Bradford to go to the E91 Coordinated Planning Meeting and start the deal January 23rd through the 25th. His room and meals will be paid for and provided by Mississippi 91 Association, so he doesn't have to pay for anything.
So, okay. Motion.
That's all I have.
Motion seconded by Mr. Gaines. Mr. Gray.
Okay.
You go first, Mr. Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
What method do y'all use? I know y'all send out stuff, employees, volunteers. How do the people in the community know that y'all need some help, some volunteer help?
Well, usually, when we have our planning meetings, whoever's on the call, like all the, you know, the ones that's hands on, we ask those, the others as well, to see if they having a volunteer thing, that they organization, the board or whoever's school. And we put it on our Facebook page as well, but we never just have a lot of people that we just, our office sits for a couple hours.
I'm, I'm gonna rather me, I hope this don't happen no more, but we need to kind of find a way to reach out to some of these churches. Maybe they could, let's see, help them get some volunteers to come in. Thank you, Mr. President.
There were some of those there, and they also went to Walmart and tried to coax those people over there and try to get them. They just, they just would not come.
Another thing, probably can reach out to some of the organizations also. You got organizations out there that look for volunteer work that they have to do for their organization, so look out to that organization.
Thank you.
And it probably would be a bad idea when, when NIFA makes a phone call or code red to request volunteers as well, because that's probably gonna reach more people than social media does. Especially the people who, who get that service and would be more than happy to come down for a couple hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Darren.
Good morning, Darren, how you? High court, man. How's it going? All I have, I gotta talk, contract, there's agreement between the volunteers and supervisors, and supervisors and volunteers. I get this guy to interview over it. And also, I think you might have a warrant for, out of fire investigation, you need to have signed.
Oh, is that my thing? I don't see that one.
Oh. I check the court this morning.
Okay, she might have it, and she don't know exactly where it's at if I have it.
Most things, uh, that people be careful, you know, cold weather, you know, they had space, things like that, so be careful of that. Especially when you enter your stenty course, you're not rated for the stenty course, you know. If you can't catch on fire, really, if you are using one, once, you kind of have to not through all heaters and all that need to flood directly to the wall. Because if not, it'll overheat, and then, yeah, we got a fire. So I know, I think everybody's running the last few weeks, well, last week with all the weather going on, looking for our performance and all. It was going the last three, four days, day and night, so just ask people, just be cautious of the space used and stuff they might be using. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Before we leave, Scott.
Hold on, one sec.
Yes, sir.
Scott, the city has asked us to allow them to use the, what is that, rent?
The Riff Tap?
Yeah, the Riff Tap grant, because we not gonna use it this year, and they gonna use the, be able to use that $90,000. So.
Go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
Through the state, and talk to Brad Smith about that. It has to be an agreement signed between the county and the city, then they will be responding to the county. And it has to be at least a 12-year contract signed before they sign off on it, because the state has to approve it.
So have you talked to the county to tell them that? He already know.
Yeah, he should know.
Go ahead.
Supervisor, I, I, you know, if they wanna make the application without proper documentation, you know, that's, that's on the city for it. I mean, we're not offering them a 12-year deal, it's mine, so. And the city can come to us asking for a 12-year, they ask us for a proper grant.
That, that's all I thought they asked.
So if it fails because they don't have that proper, proper documentation, you know, that's on, yeah, well, it still would have done everything it could. What they may come back and say, "Need this, that, and the other," and then they come back.
So, so let, let me, I need to get a clear understanding. So as of now, what, what are you saying that they should do about the grant that we not gonna do?
We previously said if they weren't applying, since we're not using it, certainly can apply for it. You're not saying if they apply for it, they won't be granted because they don't have a 12-year, you know, right now, we're a month-to-month deal, so.
Yeah, the state said they won't sign off unless, we just use the 12-years, that's the minimum, 12-years. Contract agreement between the counties that they said they won't sign off on, because, you know, they all won't. If they get the truck in the end, they can, you know, they pull out, and you know, we'll lose out.
So this is what I'm gonna ask the attorney to do, if it's okay with this board. Send the city attorney a letter and explain to them exactly what both of y'all talked about. And as long as we did what we had to do, and then it's all for us.
That's what I was thinking. That makes sense, Darren?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I have some question. Have we had an agreement that we.
If we had an agreement that we uh, that you need to sign between the volunteers and the board supervisor, should we be uh voting on a motion for the president to sign that agreement?
Before, can you, I think you wanted me to review it first.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, once y'all approve it, they get signed, then that's sent to the state.
That's why I was gonna ask you, make a motion, pending legal review, so it would not hold up, wouldn't hold you up. We wouldn't have to wait two weeks on it to get it done.
Okay.
So uh, I I'll make the motion uh uh pending legal review uh of the contract between the uh volunteers and the uh county board supervisor.
All right. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have it.
I I see a call there.
Okay, yes, thank you. All right.
Good morning. The lead price purchase clerk for Adams County Board of Supervisors. I would like to spread across, spread the credit card cards to minutes for approval for December.
All right, need a motion?
Aye.
Sir.
Need by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion.
Okay. Second of all, we had a bid for the donor for the road department on January fourth at ten a.m. Two bids were submitted. First bid, bucket sales amount two hundred seventy two thousand three hundred forty two dollars and thirty five cent. Thirty six month back, uh thirty six month buyback, a hundred and thirty two thousand five hundred. Thirty six month back, a hundred forty seven thousand five hundred, and forty eight month back, a hundred and thirty two thousand five hundred. Stripling sales price, two hundred fifty eight thousand seven hundred ninety five dollars and nineteen cent. Forty eight month buyback, a hundred and ten thousand. And stripling uh sales price for the thirty six month back was two hundred fifty three thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars and ninety eight cent. The thirty six month buyback, a hundred and twenty five thousand. Um, Robbie um recommended bucket with the thirty six month buyback.
Okay. We need a motion to.
Well, I mean, is this replacing equipment that we've already sold?
Y'all want them buyback? They picking it up for auction, we gonna auction instead of buyback. We got guaranteed more from the auction company like we normally have, so they're gonna pick it up at the end of this fall. The one we have now, the auction offer, this is a move to replace it.
Is it available now? Is it available now?
I I guess it's possible now, yeah.
Yeah, we'll need to make sure that we'll do financing for it. So whenever it's ready, we gotta get that kind of in row to do that.
And like I said, if I do without it a few weeks, whatever that's fine, sometimes I have to, once it's time to get the old, get it off and get the check back, you know, what I'm saying, on the buyback and buy one, and then we do the other, you know. That's okay, but it's, you know, what's time will come off, you know, from our buyback, like we, you know, the buyback program.
Yeah, I'll get with, we'll tell everyone, I'll get with Stephanie, and we'll go through this process, but also the lease purchase process as well.
And bring it to the board another day.
It's okay, I won't, I won't worry about it. I mean, I told you during budget time that it was coming off, you know, this year, and I also leave, leave.
Okay. Need, need a motion to.
So you, that's true, Mr. President. So you said you want to go with the bucket instead of.
Correct.
Uh, stripling.
It's the lowest possibility.
Move by Ms. Hutchins.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? All right, motion approved.
That's all I have, any questions?
Thank you. Yes, sir, you next.
Good morning, Sam, how are you? BSO for the county, uh making strides to get a list of all the veterans. I went to a VFW meeting last week, and uh they were very helpful. Um, one thing that they brought up, uh, trying to get a sign outside the sanitation building that does say uh veteran service office. Because a lot of them don't know uh where to go when they they look for uh. Uh, had some uh meetings with some guys from the state. They uh tried to get my accreditation uh done within the next two months. It's gonna, it's gonna be a little hard, but uh we gonna make that happen. And also, I have a meeting with uh one of the uh district BSOs in uh in McComb to try to get a outreach program done down here. And uh that would include uh representatives from the uh state BA, uh the planes department, uh some nurses, uh so they can come in and uh do a one stop shop. Where they can file a claim, get their DC two fourteen, and everything done right there. Uh, we had one person over at the safe room that was a veteran. He's uh in a little predicament, uh but we got the ball rolling, trying to help him out right now.
So, another, another thing else, I'm I'm glad you're doing the outreach, which is good, because I uh talked to a couple of veterans that didn't even know we had a veteran uh office. So uh I did tell them, you know, they can come see you, they were still going all the way to Jackson
Yes.
to try to get things taken care of. And I said, oh, we got a veteran's office right here that you could deal with. So uh I did give them your address and told them what, you know, where they could come and everything.
Yeah, uh uh ever since the first day, I've had a lot of veterans come in, and uh one of the comments uh that they made was uh they didn't, they happy that somebody answered the phone and and actually was there for them. So we, I'm trying to repair those relationships with the veterans around here. And uh it's gonna be a a hard fight, but we gonna get the information out to them and make sure. And it's uh one more thing that uh I'm working on, it is a uh Cabela's. Uh, I talked to the uh ladies down at Cabela's, and they wanna do a sponsor a veterans fishing. I did a safe park. But um until I get that list, I I can't, I can't get it out to the veterans and say, hey. And the only thing they would have to do is they show up. And I'm gonna talk to public transportation, see if we could get uh somebody that uh the veterans meet probably over at the safe room, and they get bus out there or something to the safe park, if they don't have a ride. And the only thing they have to do is show up, uh the bus will provide the reels and rods and and uh plates for the veterans.
Uh, the sign, is that in the budget where they can just get their, get a sign made, uh Mr. Slowber? We don't have to prove it, have a motion to get a sign.
I would assume you could find it in the budget.
I would think so.
Maybe you get it Stephanie or not.
Okay.
I would be shocked if we could find out or something.
You just talked about a a a twelve by twelve sign or something like that, just something to put on the wall over there?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. Uh, probably hanging right down below the uh the one that says sanitation on.
Yeah, okay. Figure out what you want and and get with uh Ms. Washington when she gets back. She's probably heard most of this anyway, but she wants to know what you want, I'm sure.
Okay.
I'm sure we had one at one time, we should have, or who knows?
Yeah, but the, but the word is getting out, and so uh more people are coming over with you, you know, I'm I'm happy about. And uh the more come over, the more uh better train that I'm gonna get, so. Uh, I'm just happy to have these guys out.
Have you had a chance to cool that area around Walmart where all the homeless people are, see if we got a lot, any veterans left?
No, I hadn't uh had a chance to get over there.
Mr. President, I have a question. Uh, was any valuable information left in that office that you could kind of utilize to get you a jumpstart on?
Not really. Not really.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I guess we'll leave it at that, unless you have anything else, anybody got any questions? Mr. Martin? All right, thank you.
Very.
All right. I did find that sheet and sign.
All right. Thank you. One board, my name is Tim Colford, I'm with Mississippi Court collections. And for the past seven years, we've had the pleasure of serving Adams County collecting past due uh justice court fines, personal property taxes, and mobile home taxes. Uh, our contract, contract, excuse me, much parallel with the terms of the supervisors. And it has expired, and we're coming back before the board to see if you would consider renewing our contract with your county for another four years. Um, I'm not sure you you understand how the process will be, if you're familiar with this, I'll just go over briefly, so so you'll understand. Uh, both the justice court and the tax collector term uh past dues over to us after a period of ninety days since their past due. We collect on that, by the state law, we can add twenty five percent to the in-state fine tax and fifty percent to an out-of-state fine tax, because there's not a whole lot of those. When they pay in, we pay the county the twenty five, the hundred percent of what was owed, and we keep the dependent, giving twenty five percent of it. So the county's keeping the entire amount of fines that was originally assessed, or taxes that were originally assessed, of your assess. Uh, of course, you you uh you don't owe anything if we don't collect anything. Uh, within the past seven years, I don't think we've had a major dispute or a matter, but no litigation's ever been brought before us or your county uh doing unfair collection practices. Uh, we try to represent the county and ourselves in a professional manner, and and carry out an efficient uh type collections process. It's not a, it's not your typical, stereotypical, keep calm, keep calm, keep calm until they pay. We're more of a letter writing campaign, and we will reach out personally if they'll give us their personal information. Um, when we collect the money, by state law, we are to turn over all monies collected to the county, which is what we do. We work one month in arrears, so right now we're working in December, even though we're actually in January. So we turn over all the money to the county, we let you reconcile your book, and make sure your numbers are right. We do the same, and then we're paid on what we do the next month. And that's how it's it's been for the past four years, that's how it would continue to be if you would agree to uh terminate the contract. So, we're Mississippi company based out of Brandon. Um, again, that's really a good overview of what we do and what we've done, so I'll look forward to questions if you have.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Um, I've never seen any of these fines collected, who are giving these the amount?
They submit them to the county, and the county has to remit their portion back when they collect. Just, it should be adjusted in. Ms. Vern Johnson receives the the receipt of what we collect and what they collect, and we reconcile and send that to them. Um, so that's how the process works.
Do you all see it?
Brandon, you.
Brandon, you get it? You don't get it? Okay, well, maybe I can, I can get them from uh justice court and see what's in.
Mr. Gray, you have.
My, my question is, uh, when when you collect, whatever you collect from the individuals, what process do you use to send the money back, how does it scent down here?
We actually either bring it ourselves, or we typically mail it. We mail it to the justice.
Check?
Yes, sir, check, with the uh with itemized list of what's been collected and the fines, uh the payers or the defendants.
Okay. My next question is, how far do y'all go back?
We can go back, there's no statute on how far we can go back. We'll go back as far as you let us go back. Now, we've been doing this since two thousand sixteen, so we've gone pretty, it's pretty far back as we can go uh with the information that we've been uh been turned over. The further you go back, you also have uh more of a chance of deceased or deferred payments or things that have been leased that they were not aware of. So ten years is typically as far back as we like to go, but there's certain, there are decisions that have been made that nobody knows about, so.
Um, what kind of monies have you collected on average, uh say a month, or or you wanna go like, do you have something?
Yeah, I do. Um, well, there's two different ways to look at it. Since two thousand and sixteen, we have re, we have reduced fines in justice court by two point one million dollars. Now, of that amount of money, only one point four six five is cash, okay? The other ones were uh cases that we found have been dismissed, which was a hundred thirteen thousand. We had five hundred seventy one thousand dollars in fines. Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Dismissed, say that again?
Okay. Um, since two thousand and sixteen, the total amount of fines that we have dismissed due to your, uh due to the county's request was a hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Now, we don't know the reason, we're instructed by the county to, is what we do, so we just dismiss that. Or we have found.
Mr. President. So in 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 the process of dismissing it, what happens?
See, again, we do whatever the county tells us to do. If we send to the, if we find this, let's say John Smith has had a dismissed case, and wasn't noted on the county's side, and of course, we didn't notice. We call the county, and they'll go back and research and say, yes, it in fact was dismissed, and it wasn't updated on the software. So it could have been oversight, it could have been a mistake.
Thank you.
Okay? The second amount of money was five hundred seventy one thousand dollars that was reduced, and that was due to deceased individuals, or deceased people that had fines.
Okay. Um. Anything else, guys? Uh, do we need a motion to?
To approve their contract, he's heard from me.
Have you got the contract or what?
It's the same, just so I can, I I have several I can go off here, yes, sir.
Okay. Pending.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is set, I'm sorry.
I'll make a uh motion to attempt contract pending legal review, uh over the time of the second.
All right, second by Mr. Middleton. Any more discussion? Scott, did you have something else?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Counsel, I'm I'm sorry, may I have a question, Mr. President?
Yeah.
There's two separate contracts, we need like two separate motions, or can you carry out the second motion? Okay. Thank y'all so much.
Okay. Need a vote? All in favor? Motion approved.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, boys.
Mr. Dollar.
First of all, this morning, I'd like to thank uh road department for the job they've done in this uh winter storm we've had. Um, done a lot of work, a lot of time. Uh, it's a while, say, no one got hurt. I didn't see any wrecks myself on any county roads. I did see a vehicle or two on the side, you know, pulled over, but like they just got stuck in this park for two. But I do wanna say a big thank to the road department. I wanna thank the secretary at our office that come in for both the ease, for people following the course of road hazard conditions that they were in, uh that the road were in, that we would know and get the call to get out to do what we did. So I just wanna send that out to my department and the other first responders that was uh out working as well as we were. Second thing I have, uh last November, we've been talking about first responders for the road department. Um, last November, y'all had a letter of support for us to do it. Uh, we still been doing some research on it, got with Scott here, uh Lamar County, Lamar County got with their attorney, um Tommy Jones, uh president of the road management association. He been working on it a car or two. Uh, we've come up with in two thousand three, President George Bush issued a presidential policy uh to recognize public works as first responders. In two thousand ten, Mississippi under House Bill six six four, recognize public works as first responders. So I've sent all that to Scott, Scott's looked over, uh sent it to Brad, Brad looked over. And I would like for the board to recognize Adams County Road Department and all the first responders. And Scott, do you have anything?
Do you want a resolution recognizing all those first responders?
Some of.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Just, Scott, he looked over everything and um realized uh the documentation and the uh research that Robert have done.
I've been granting the resolution for it, but we've done something almost identical, like two years ago.
Been on record.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Thank y'all. Um, four year road plan, before y'all brought it last uh meeting, um brought it back, had a few changes that we added. Uh, I did want to add one this morning, before y'all do adopt it, is uh spare lane, you know, we had some confusion with spare lane, spare circle. We had some confusion with spare lane, spare circle. We got all that straight. We did like to add spare circle on our asphalt project. I would like to add spare lane to the four-year road plan. So before y'all adopt it, if y'all need it to.
Okay, I need a motion to add spare lane to the four-year road plan.
So.
Second by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
No, this is the.
That's the right one. I laid it on the office today. I just didn't have spare lane in the day before y'all adopted.
So we're adopting this as four-year road plan?
Correct. Y'all wrote the road. Um, Brady mentioned last meeting he needed to just make it to finish. Rather than the road.
What we adopted, I got a question, because I wasn't able to run it down. And then, have you been down there?
Yeah.
Is on the water?
Yeah, dollar for every.
Yeah.
So that's correct. Oh, we can't, but that's the only section that had proposed, you know, great.
And the supervisors, of course, understand that this can be changed.
Yeah, we can add to it.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. We need another motion? All right. All right. Angela's making a motion to adopt the four-year road plan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is. Motion approved.
Second thing I have, President Wilson, for four years, didn't dump like grant for two thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and three cents for reimbursement.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Apparently not.
Next thing I have, we were here at last meeting, but it's time now. I have three employees that are six months old, so they're raised.
Okay.
First one being Christopher Hayes.
Okay.
From thirteen to fourteen dollars an hour.
Annual rate of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty, okay?
The second one being Ronnie Elmo.
Okay.
It would be thirteen fifty to fourteen fifty an hour.
Annual pay rate of thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty.
Correct. The next one being Marcus Brown, thirteen fifty to fourteen fifty.
Annual rate of thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty, and you know, see they're all six month, one dollar rate?
Yes. After six months.
Okay. Move by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion approved. You need me? All right, Mr. Dollar.
All right. Next thing I have is EWP sites. We had the, it rained here several weeks back. So we was under a vent, pulled on my board, and went and looked and submitted on to NRCS. I will give y'all the sixteen sites if any that we would remove or leave on my own, what I will tell y'all the sites. Three is on Keystone Road, which is protecting the road, Keystone Road itself. Three is on Churchill Road, which is protecting Churchill Road at three oh eight Bartman. Three being on Lotus Drive, one thirteen, one fifteen, one seventeen, the last five, one behind, six in the houses there. The other one being thirteen South Sunflower. There's three on State Park Road. One at one twenty-five, kind of Lake Road, and one at ten thirteen Highland. They're there. That's the ones that was submitted. If you have them on there, that any supervisor in their district wants to remove or not leave on there, it's, we tend to remove them. But we did have pictures of these, and they are turned into the R C S office.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Mr. President, what happened on Martin Road, Julie, with it on there? Committed Mark Smith, you know, along with up there. Maybe a comment about.
We, we, that's the one we put the spoiled dirt to. We weren't, not this list, but I was, you know.
It was, you know, uh.
Correct, it was. And I think Mike Freeman looked at it, and he didn't think, but I did.
I just wanted to make sure, so I can respond to it. I know when the secretary told us about it, had to look at.
Yeah. So I did. Mike, I looked at it.
And then it added back.
But like I said, let me make sure, and if so, I will add it if that's it, but I will check with him when I get out of here.
I just happened to see it in the road school the other day. I just want, you know, be able to give an answer, that's all. Thank you.
We did get the spoiled dirt though.
Yeah, you told me.
Yes, okay.
Yes, good.
Mr. Dollar, have these been submitted to the R C S already?
They have, but like I said, what I did was submitted them, because we had a deadline to get them to them. And so I went on and submitted them to them. As we can do, we can pull them, if we want to pull them.
After they go look at, I would come back with a figure?
Yeah. But that's what I have on E W Ps. Other thing I have, Mr. Slubber, and I know me and you talked just briefly about this, but Deerfield Road, what they were after. You know, we went out, they don't support the bridge up there at Deerfield with those pallets. Hardup Delaney went in, they worked the oil company, done a rig in the bridge, we went out, so they put them under to support the bridge, went in, drilled a well, come back out, they removed the piles from under the bridge. Now, everything's clear, and the oil company come in and signed a sheet from, which he said they would be responsible. They just want to release. Get out there, and everything's good. I've been took pictures already, and everything's gone. It's in good shape.
Thanks. I didn't quite follow the.
Well, that's really how it brought it up. I knew, but yeah, that was what they had come south.
Yeah, that's mine.
Is that bridge posted?
No, it's low weight. It's posted for the rating it's supposed to. It's not on a low rating, but it's posted for what it is, for what bridge it is.
Is that the way they bring the oil out of it, or just the way they're?
No, they're going out.
They're going out.
They just come in with the rig there, so we allowed them. I went and took pictures of that with Hardup Delaney, and they were agreed with come side. All for them saying that would be responsible for any damages.
Okay.
Any damages to the road?
No.
Of the bridge?
No. To the, to the bridge.
Okay.
Because the road was good. It was just, it wasn't ready for what they were going to care across it. So we went in and like, jack, you know, put timbers and all on the bridge. Yeah. Offset the weight of the bridge going across it. So everything's fine. They went in, done it, got it out. Mr. Slubber had it signed, and he give them a release and they're good. Next thing I have, Mr. Slubber, the deal that I spoke with you about Elgin, I went in and got prices of what that is. I guess I'm gonna get with the chairman guy, get him to meet with you once I get those to you, get him to sign off before he's going to remove the timber.
Slubber?
With the supervisor area, and that's what was coming on.
Yeah, you're Slubber.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Y'all have something for me?
Mr. President, I don't have one for Rodney. I do want to thank you for you and your, your problem. Know y'all was out there, and dangerous out there, and I know I called you a couple times, and I'm glad everybody made it through this storm safe, and I just want to thank y'all for everything y'all did.
And I think what I'm working on something, I'm a couple of quarters forward, and I think it'll save us some money. I'm looking at a sand spreader for us, the county, we don't have one, we're putting it out in bulk, but I, I think it, you know, a storm or two would save us a lot of money, a lot of sand, and get the town prepared.
Mr. President, I mean, looking through this, looking through this docket, every time I get it, that the price of everything is to hit the roof.
Sand, metal, metal, we're talking about, the sand has tripled. We usually, we leave someone, we're looking for five dollars a cubic yard, where it's just eight dollars a cubic yard of sand. So everything's going up. That's, that's a yearly bill that we found. Here is the year that we have to keep this bill going, so. Yeah, everything's going up, the grass, so. Thank y'all.
I don't know if this is for you or, the bridge posted on Hannah's Bottom Road?
That's on me from.
The engineer?
Me and engineer, but I haven't received it. Which one is it?
Um.
I haven't seen.
You got a structure now for Hannah's Bottom Road, intersecting a ditch. We want to change the load rating. It looks like it's not closing the road.
Yeah, they want to lower the rating, but I do want to see what repairs need to be done. You know, I think it's a big one of those piles.
You wish to know which one we're talking about?
That's what I said. I have not received that. So I'd like to have. Thank you.
Morning, Board. How y'all doing? Morning. I do want to thank the road department too for this, because I've seen them out a lot, just these last couple of days on highways, clearing out the ice and the black ice that is very important. I own it to the, the citizen, but the others still, we trying to get to even calls. And now, speaking of calls, you know, we were, we were stressed out pretty good during these, during these ice storms, trying to help folks and helping get to work all kinds of stuff for the essential workers. I do want to take a minute to thank the sheriff's office, not just the sheriff's, all the police department, our law enforcement in this area. You all know what's been going on for the last couple of days here, and with the captions. And I just can't say enough how important it is to be able to have those type of relationships built with other agencies, where they are coming in, like the Coria did, the Game War, and everybody, U S Marshals, to help us capture those individuals. At the end of the day, that was the most, that was, I think that was the most fear I've ever seen in this community was over those four days, and it felt really good to bring that to the close, to where no one was hurt, injured, or anything of that nature. So I thank the law enforcement, and I thank the citizens wholeheartedly for that. I know you all bring up the homeless people over there about Walmart. I've been in those groups several times, and I just want y'all to know, everybody and their mama has reached out to those guys. They want to live off the bridge. That's the bottom line. Every, every time I went over there with, with, with community activist groups that wanted to help those guys, those people over there, they just, they don't want to live off the bridge. So all we can do is, is do like, doing like you said, Mr. President, and that keep trying to help them, but the reality of it is, they, it's certain levels of help they want. They don't want to be, they don't want to be around authority, like you say, no matter what form it is, whether it's law enforcement or whether it's Catholic Church, they don't, they don't want it. They just want the funding and the food.
I'm assuming they all have propane heaters over there or something, because somebody kept telling me from one of the churches that they kept one of their propane bottles refilled. So I'm assuming they got a Mr. Buddy heater or something, and they, the churches were filling them, but they, they refused nearly. When it really got cold, because they wanted them to come to the warming shelter and get something to eat, but it's just.
I hope, I hope not, because I hate for us to be down in a forest fire over there. I do want to remind the Board, I do want to remind the Board, Brandon, you can send out an email to your mind, Sheriff's Court, that we will be picking up trash by the doors at one P M. after lunch today. You know, we have a lot of tasks on our hands, because that's one of the things that, that they asked us to do, was to help out with the county buildings by picking up the trash, and I cleaning the buildings, picking them up. So tell them if they miss their one o'clock pickup, it's gonna be here, unless they take it out. That's our, that's us trying to do our part, you know, to help the, help the county out with the situation that's going on with trash.
And that was stepping in, and you talked about that.
Yes. And, and I, and I'm glad you brought that up, turning slow, slow, because I do appreciate us having those type of conversations before we have in these meetings.
Yes.
Very much appreciate that. I do want the county to be aware that Sheriff's Office is partnering with Mary Berry Purges to put on a deal with cancer awareness event on April thirteenth. We don't have the location and the time set yet, but they're gonna start, or we're gonna start promoting this. We're all the way up here, because, you know, Mary Berry Purges is a vision allowing this community to battle cancer right here at home. And they bringing some treatments here that may have not been here before. And so I, I just hope that you all mark that calendar, April thirteenth, mark that date on your calendars and be a part of that as well, because it's, it's gonna be a, we're trying to make it into a, a negative beginning here, here, and have it happen to the masses. Supervisor Gray, you asked me about the line item. I did find out what that line item was and what it is, those, those P N's that they're talking about, they come with the fingerprint kits that we use to fingerprint children. Some parents choose to have their kids fingerprinted, so that if they go missing, we can, we don't have to send them in automatically, but we can send those prints in to the national database where they can be found all around the world. So that, that's part of, part of it's mechanical arrays. And the other part of it is first aid kits, two, hypothesized first aid kits, two, that we pass out at schools and things for children. So that's, that's what that, that all comes out of our market, but just wanted you to know that. The last thing I have today, if I'm not mistaken here, is two new hires for the jail. These are not new positions. We're filling old positions. They are signed by the human resource officer. And one of them is for the India Smith, and the other one is for Brittany Williams. Both at a higher rate of thirteen twenty-three an hour, which is annually twenty-seven thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars per season.
I did have folks with us. Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you all.
Y'all have a question for me?
No, sir. I did want to thank you and your staff and National Police Department, and everybody else that had a hand in apprehending those individuals that, like you call them juvenile, but I think at this point, they're probably going to be trials and adults for the most part for their crimes. But I know there was a lot of angst in this city and county for four or five days over that, because, you know, we had an incident like that before you became sheriff, maybe fifteen years ago, but you probably remember. They were unscrewing light bulbs and breaking into people's houses, and a lady got killed, if by her husband. Because everybody was scared to death, and they heard in no ways they had a gun in their hand. And that was going on here as well. But it was good. Everybody's locking their cars and their houses, which you should do all the time anyway, but I'm just glad they're off the streets and we don't have to worry about that anymore.
I was working at the police department when that happened. That was my fear with this, was that people were gonna be so afraid that somebody who, who was innocent was gonna get hurt. That's why we work around the clock with us. And I gotta tell you guys, with us and everybody surrounding us, but I gotta give it to you, U S Marshal in particular. And I know he don't want me to call his name, so I won't because of obvious reasons. But every day, no matter what time it was, he came over here and allowed, worked with us, and we had access to some of their equipment that we don't have. And when I tell you just to, to see the full scale of operations with that and just see how our men and women, the sheriff's office, did the plan. You know, those guys, those ladies, everybody came out and rose and did what they needed to do, because we knew who was at stake with those individuals running around with no hope. A hopeless person is the most dangerous person you can ever encounter. And anytime you carjacked two people, saw their guards, and then, you know, you shot somebody in the neck and the back before you took their car and continued, continued on your crime spree without leaving here, that, that, that was something that we knew we had to get a hand in. Everybody in this, in the entire mission. When I say entire mission, I'm talking all the way from Flavorn to Jefferson, Franklin, to the Coys, to Wilson County, you know, all this around here, National Police Department, U S Marshals, Capitol Police, Mississippi Bureau of Investigation. That's how many people that we were able to call on and who provided us resources to get this job done. And they, everybody did outstanding job on one of their planes. And it, and it pays off with everything, because often you see a man, like it, like it's, it ended without anybody getting hurt on either side, and that's what we pride ourselves here in Adams County is. We don't go out to, to, to kill people. You know, we go out to, to render justice, and our form of justice is bring you to justice so you can go through the court system. It is never our goal to go out to shoot, might even hurt somebody. And the only time that does happen is when you change the rules of engagement on us. And I say that, because I want people to understand, if you attack our officers viciously with your hands or shoot at our officers with guns, we are going to respond. But our first goal is to try to de-escalate and get that in the system without that happening. But the reality of it is, in the business that we in, there's always a possibility. So I, I, I give, I give all the guys who are out there kudos for bringing this thing to the close without anything having to happen.
I, again, I wanna thank your department, um, there, there was fear throughout the community, we all know that, fear from women going to the grocery store.
Yes.
Fear of parents who didn't wanna send their kids to school.
Yep.
Um, and, and when you did your press release, I think the Democrat put it out there, uh, seeing five, six, seven, eight, even possibly more agencies than that video, it was, it was pretty cool. And, uh, that's what it takes, but, you know, I, I wanna thank y'all for what you did.
It, it would, and I'm glad you brought that up, that's one group that I failed to mention today. I want to thank the Democrats, because when I called them, they came out there, finished the road, without any hesitation on that scene, and allowed us to put people's fears and threats right in there. Every time I called the Democrat and, and the news teams, they have not hesitated when it came to Adams County to put out the information that we were able to put out. And that means so much to me to have an avenue where we can get information out to the public real, real quick, I know y'all seen all the, the articles that went out, and there was a ton of them, and I was calling, I was calling the, I was calling them while I was on the move, giving them updates so we can get it out to the public, 'cause I don't have a way to just put it out to everybody. So having that relationship with the media means the world to me, I can call Jane, I can call Springer, I can call ten three, ten twelve, all these people. They did what they needed to do, because everybody had one common goal, and that's to put an end to that manhunt, and, and resolve the fears in the community, so I do wanna thank, the Democrats, our news teams, the radio stations, don't let me forget them, ninety-seven point seven and ninety-five point one, they allowed me to come on and speak to the public, live, improv too, all that mattered when it, when it came to making sure that people were aware of what's going on, aware that they were still here, and aware that we needed assistance and finding these individuals before they hurt somebody else or somebody hurt them.
I just wanna say, I'm saying, Mr. President, I wanna commend you all to, um, I wanna commend you all, the Sheriff's Department, everybody that was in, I, I mean, the Police Department, and everybody that was involved in this, uh, the U.S. Marshal, everyone, because I was getting a lot of calls about, how they was afraid, you know, and they feared for their life, they wasn't coming out at night, and, um, 'cause I even gave you a call that said, you know, having been called, you know, you was hearing all kind of rumors, there were so many rumors going around, but, um, I was just glad that you all apprehended them and, you could tell that the training that you all had, it showed then, because like you say, a lot of people get killed in a situation like this. You all did what you all were supposed to do, you apprehended them without having to use force or guns or anything, so I just commend you and everyone for doing what you all did.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaines?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, uh, also, thank you for, uh, for doing what you did, and, you know, I seen you right after, happened to see you right after, during the time, but, uh, our community was in great fear, and, you know, uh, we could not really prove it, you couldn't catch them, but, according, on that first year, they was in my area, so you can imagine how much fear it was, and fear it was with families, females, single females, single people, everybody was scared, so, you know, um, and I'd like to thank you, and I'm not gonna call any specific names, but I would say everybody involved, and that's what happens when you can get good teamwork, things like that happen, and so, you know, I wanna also commend y'all in this situation, with no more loss of human life, so I thank the sheriff and continue to do a good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, I deal with everything everybody else said, but the most important thing, uh, that the sheriff said, people might not realize, is, is the communication that he had with National Democrats, the, the, the TV stations and everybody else, 'cause he was some, uh, wrong information put out there, and he had to, they had to turn around and put the right information out there.
Yes.
So sometime when he put the wrong information out there, it is way worse than the right information, if he wouldn't have had that avenue to put the right information out there, you'd think people would've been scared.
Yes.
They would've really been scared, 'cause I got called out on Woodland, say, oh, they got one of them coming out the house, oh, they got a roadblock, and they did have somebody coming out the house, but it wasn't that one of them.
Right.
So, uh, again, thank everybody involved in, uh, teamwork, make the dream work.
Mr. President, I think it's important that after he was done, the sheriff real, probably could've gone home to the house and taken a little bit of a break, but he got to meet with, uh, the attorney and Stephanie, you know, real boring, hour and a half long conversation about his budget and whatnot, so, you know, continue to work even harder, that means a lot, and we're trying to get this entity to do that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you all.
All right, all right.
All right, good morning, boys.
Good morning, how you doing today?
Good morning, be real short, uh, pretty much the strike funding project for Kingston Road, Lower Woodville Road, Auburn Road, uh, we did receive the, uh, comments, and we have addressed those comments, and I plan to, um, uh, submit those to State Aid tomorrow, Coach will just drop, I haven't been in the office, so this is my first day in office, so I get those plans submitted to State Aid for that project tomorrow. And, uh, Morgantown Road, we have been working on Morgantown Road, have our surveyor, when he could come down, he was, uh, very, very fine, those position surveys and previous, uh, survey, uh, so he'll, he picked that back up on Monday, and then the last thing I have is the EWP project for Main路人 block two and three, and Lincoln Heights, they have been competing by this contractor. He has submitted his final invoice for that project, and that's releasing a retainage in amount of twenty thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Some requests approval of the contractor's invoice, as well as engineer's invoice in amount of one thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents.
Okay, I need a motion, so, moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
Sent the request over to NRCS too?
What?
You're gonna send a request over to NRCS for their, isn't it?
And, and, and Robbie, you?
Yeah, yeah, we all, we all met together.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Uh, motion approved.
All right, um, the next would be the request approval of signature for the reimbursement, uh, which should be the final reimbursement for the, uh, same project. Uh, my deal is provided to Ms. Brenda Lewis for the board's president's signature.
Okay.
And then also, although you go ahead if you wanna go.
Is there another motion we don't like, need to make or?
Yeah, let me make, do do both of us, it's the same thing, then also request of approval for the, uh, final performance report for that project as well, both of them have been completed and provided to Ms. Lewis for the board's president's signature.
Okay, need a motion?
Yes, I will.
Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Say.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
And the last thing I wanna provide, you should've received a copy, but just in case you didn't, State Aid provided an updated, uh, I guess funds report, since we was considered a new board, um, you do have State Aid funds now in an amount of four million, four point seven million dollars that you can use over the next four years, it is highly recommended by the State Aid engineer, district engineer, uh, that some projects be programmed, and that money be utilized, uh, whenever possible, soon as possible. Um, you also have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in what they have a new fund called the State Aid Bridge Program, and what that'll do is it allow for bridges that are not L S B P eligible, but they are on State Aid route, to be constructed, so you do have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund, and then you do have three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in your L S B P fund. Uh, one thing to keep in mind, I know you have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your State Aid Bridge Program, if you decide to do a bridge, and that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not enough to cover that bridge construction, you can pool from your State Aid funds to cover whatever is left over. So just keep in mind, you should have, like I said, the letter should come from State Aid, if not, I can always provide a copy of it, if I do have a copy, that's, you know.
Uh, got it, go ahead, Mr. Gaines.
Three hundred and fifty thousand is in the what, what sum?
Yeah, seven hundred and fifty thousand in the State Aid Bridge Program, that's considered S and B B, and you have three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in your L S B P. And then of course you have the four point seven in your, uh, State Aid fund, that's for construction and engineering services.
Right.
Yeah.
These, uh, EWP's that are on Kingston Road, for instance, is a State Aid road, they not qualified for any of this money to be used to fix.
No, for you, State Aid money for match money, yeah, I don't think.
No, not for match money, just straight up. Get some problems.
Far as making the projects, it would probably be cheaper for match money, I mean, I know what you're saying, it would cost if you use that money, but, probably be higher, higher contract to do it than, or do it and then do the.
And then, and then that'll be seen through the road tomorrow?
No.
Okay, all right, I haven't looked at it, so I don't.
Yeah.
No, that's why I'm asking, okay. Um. Do you have anything else for us?
That's all I have, unless there's pushing for me to add, for my answers.
Anybody got anything? All right.
Man, I appreciate your time as always, stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a little cool, uh, any more departmental reports? Um. You, Shane, you got, Shane, you got anything?
No, sir, I was just asking.
Oh, do we need to talk to Jay, or is that something else, uh, computer consultants? Oh, do you have something for us?
Nothing that I could, parts that we can discuss at this point, would have some personal information.
Okay, so be in executive session, okay, um. Round the table in, if we're ready for that? Do you want a public comment? No public comments either, right? Okay, um, all right, come, come to the table, uh, sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, this to the county engineer, um, this made me think of, uh, with all the money, State Aid, that we have available for the next four years, uh, it's gonna come to a point where I think we're gonna have to, uh, have a vision and a goal for what we're gonna do with this money, and, uh, it's gonna cause a lot of, uh, communication with this board. Um, first of all, uh, I would like to know as of right now, our financial status, because I don't know, I mean, everybody's saying we broke, everybody's saying this, I need to know, what our financial status is as of today. Do we have any money, do we, we don't have no money, or whatever the case may be, so, uh, I just, can anybody answer that question?
Can we, Stephanie, get us a report for the next meeting, or do you want?
Well.
Uh, Stephanie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, I understand where.
The reason I'm asking the question is this, uh, Ms. Stephanie, handling her business the way she wanna handle her business, but as a supervisor, when I have to evaluate anybody, I wanna be fair in my evaluation, and what I mean by that is, she just getting here January the second, I need a report, before she got here, where we are, and then.
Uh, they said, um, for the month of December, the first, um, of the board, he had, uh, provided a tax rebate, um, and a budget report for, um, tens of the last million dollars, however, we're in tax collections season, so, um, we do have some money that we're waiting on to support our current school circuit.
And I did speak to the tax clerk, but that settlement has not been made, but yes, he has honor before the twentieth of the month to do that settlement, so.
Did we ever do a tax anticipation, or were we ever making it through without?
We should have, but we never had a general.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, basically, we do have cash reserves, but we've gotta get and stay on our budget that the board approved, we, or we'll dig more into those cash reserves, so if that makes sense. We've got savings, but if we keep, if we don't stick to our budget, we'll dip more into those savings, and what we'd like to do is try to find additional savings that of course would be here, so we, we maintain our cash balances.
So are we still, uh, sending out stuff to our department heads, make sure they get what they need and not what they want?
Yeah, I mean, they get garage by.
I'm in the process of, I am in the process of sending out a memo to the department heads to make sure they're owned by emergency purchases, but I'll be sending that next week.
Uh, I'm gonna say this again, uh, I, I just think it's time for us to come over the plan, because at the end of the day, this is our second term together, and whatever hole we got in, we got in it, in it together, and, and if we're gonna get out of it, we gonna get out of it together. So it's gonna take all out here, put it together, uh, if we, uh, is in a financial bind, then it's gonna take all of us working together to get out that financial bind. Uh, I'd like to, uh, Scott, me and you and Angela met with Southwest Planet, have we finalized that deal yet, man?
In my mind, we have, but I will get confirmation from works that it's been finalized. 'Cause we all met and were on the same page, and I'll get confirmation today on that.
I think he was just waiting on you to revise.
I don't revise.
You revised it and sent it out to him.
And I'll make sure you've had the most provides, 'cause I may have sent it to your county as opposed to the other workable, you know?
Right.
Okay.
And.
That was done that day that we did it, I came, went, updated it, I was late, but I didn't leave the office, so I got done.
And, um, Greenway, Greenway, where we take our, uh, did we have a price increase on that too? 'Cause it looked like everything I look on is, on the docket, is, is more than it used to be.
They, they just wanted to raise the price, but they're locked into a contract with us, aren't they?
They have CPI, so the CPI may have gone up, but to my knowledge, in fact, it's gonna be the reverse, that, that we found out that there were some qualm acts that there was.
Uh, and last, uh, I do wanna, again, um, thank everybody, you and the community, uh, for working together, uh, in these tough times, we do have a way of putting together and, and getting things done. Uh, my simply goes out to the Lloyd family, the Noble family, David's family, and the Washington family, and since Monday was, uh, Martin Luther King Day, and, uh, we all know what kinda impact Martin Luther King had on this entire world, so I do have a quote from Martin Luther King. Still my Bible quote, I'm gonna quote, Martin Luther King, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, and, Mr. President, I think that could be the highlight.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Yeah, um, personally, I commend the road department and Robbie, but you all doing a great work, uh, doing it. The, the task we have with the ice and everything, on the roads and everything, uh, you all did a great job, and I, you never give thank you a lot, so I'd like to commend you all for the work that you all have done. Um, another item, so. Make sure, Robbie, we also get copies, uh, supervisor Gray and myself will be traveling to Washington in February, so make sure we get copies of the EWP projects that have been approved, so we can seek some funding for that.
Okay.
Those projects.
Right, uh, if the airport, and the port has something that they, they want us to present, could you get this with them?
Okay.
To make sure it's in a folder of something that we can present.
A binder.
Right. Thank you, thank you, brother.
Okay, another thing else, um, uh, we did speak about the I.T., um, situation, um, I think I had Scott to reach out to see if the candidate that we was most interested in would still be willing to accept the position. Um, if so, if he's willing and able, I think we need a body here at our time, I am willing to make a motion to buy that person. I do not, got some motion, I don't wanna give no name because of the, uh.
Motion on the floor, uh, seconded by Mr. Gray, any discussion?
That, if anything, we're gonna talk about in the executive session.
Yeah, no, please.
Is that what the executive session about?
Uh, I'm assuming that's what it's about. Uh, I'm assuming that's what it's about.
You want.
To wait to after the second session.
Motion in second.
Yeah, I'll, I'll save the wait to after the second session.
All right, thanks.
Um, the next thing I have, I don't to be determined. An item to be determined for personnel.
Okay, that concludes your report, okay. Mr. Gaines.
All right, well, once again, uh. Say, uh, thank Sheriff, um, yeah, community, I hadn't, uh, seen our community at Congress like that before, and, uh. I was so scared that we was gonna have a loss to some innocent life, cause people was really scared and people weren't really taking no chances, so, you know. Uh, I think, I thank all involved, the Sheriff, cause he leads that family, and all involved agencies to put in our community at risk, and. The road department, also Robert, uh, you know, most of you, you know, y'all know, I appreciate everything, and, uh. I don't know storms and stuff like that, I have a lot of calls, and, you know, I understand that I don't have to. But, um, I was out with you till you went in every day. I was out till ten o'clock, nine, ten o'clock, I don't breathe a day, wherever they was, and, you know, I can't do any of the work. But it is, the traffic situation is so different, I got a light on my truck, and I promise you, we, it is, uh. Well needed, and, uh, I just like being, having access, cause I did get calls out and just being out. Uh, I guess some of my constituents ask for, because, um, I always out, and, uh, we got a chance to make immediate response to that. And I mean, you know, everybody do different, but I apologize for doing what, for fear of me, cause I'm not trying to fear other people. They're just a part of my job that I like to do, and, um.
So, I don't mean to cut you off, if you was out, I wish I would've known that, man, my ancient driveway was iced up. My back steer, trying to get out there, I, I wish I would've known you was a builder.
You should've called me.
But, uh, you know, I, I thank, I thank that, and, uh, you know, was out, and, uh, I do want us to put out, like, Morgantown Road. Um, it is a horrible road, and, uh, thank the engineer, we trying to come up with a plan, um. Because if anyway it's popular, you know, I just like to put it on our, our mind, I don't know exactly what the plan, but the plan is coming up. That they're trying to come up with to be least expensive, because another three, uh, to five years on that road is horrible, I mean. You know, I think about that, how since that road was the other night, they was putting out sand, and you got people come passing the dump truck with the road iced over and. Spinning and stuff like that, and it's, it's dangerous just coming, so I do that. But what I would say to our board, um, Perry Supervisor Gray said in his report, uh, about state aid, uh, money, not only that. But, um, what I will put in our plan, um, we do have the state aid comes in and give us a, get a road manager recommendation. To, uh, things that need to be fixed, and I just wanna, and I told y'all, these summer, I'm gonna bring my twenty percent to the table. So, uh, here it is, so if, if I would recommend that we could follow some of that plan, uh, that the state aid. And the road department put, even though I might not get everything, might not be my area this time, uh, but I know if we fix one area, it goes to the end. And it'll help all the citizens out of the county, and it'll make it a whole lot easier on the road department and everybody else, and then it'll show the state that we are definitely. Following some of their recommendations, and I think that'll make it easy on everybody to, uh, try to move forward, it's been kinda a difficult year. But at the end of the day, we got elected to fight, and so I ain't quitting when to fight, I'm just gonna bring my twenty percent to the table and try to keep it positive as I can. In our years for, Mr. President.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Milton.
Yeah, you know, we, we already thanked Sheriff for what they did, uh. With the, with the juveniles that were loose, and, uh, just wanna thank them again. Thank them for their work during the storm, and thank the road department for their work, you know, again, they, they, they come out and save us all, and, uh, thank this God, but we got a good crew out there. Uh, first thing I have, uh, Scott, you looked over the Coca-Cola contract, I think you emailed that out, are you good with everything there?
Yeah, I sent out a review as to what the proposal is on the email. You over this thing, I would like to.
Yeah.
Has everybody seen that?
I have not, because I, I, I haven't been getting my county emails in.
It provides that the county would get twenty percent commission on all of our vending machines from Coke, all of the vending machines would be switched from Pepsi to Coke. Uh, they would provide us a twelve thousand dollar scoreboard, plus they will, uh, maintain and repair the scoreboard. Uh, throughout the contract, which is a five-year deal, five-year contract. It's one, it's a scoreboard, baseball scoreboard that has the innings listed, and it's one of the, I always, I was kinda pulled a long, uh, baseball type scoreboard, so it's not just a small one or whatever. Um, they would provide banners for events, um, they would provide meeting board for concessions, uh, they would give discounts on emergency water. Um, and they said they'll supply in-kind supportive marketing, up to a thousand dollars a year. They'll donate up to fifty cases a year of twenty ounce, uh, Cokes for events. Um, they will provide concessions in trailers upon two weeks' notice for any events of the county. Um. The county agrees that, uh, will have Coke-only vending machines, and the concession stands that we have will all be happy to cover. Uh, we will have to do the installation of the, of the scoreboard, so that's more or less the contract, it was really looked more like a, was an interesting contract, I guess. That, it was kinda like a PowerPoint presentation as to what was, a very straightforward contract, um, when it came to.
I, I got it, I got a question, uh. When they say. Donate up to fifty cases, who they donating it up to, who they donating it to?
To the county for county events, a year.
Give me an example.
Toy launching, stuff like that, what, what I got.
Any county, any county event that we have.
Exactly, and they were not very, like, restricted, has to be this, that, or the other, they were only fifty cases of Coke.
I think. I think that is, is an awesome deal, but in the future, I, I do. Uh, would like, put a face. With a, a name, one thing I know is Coke right now, and I, I think it's awesome deal, don't get me wrong, this is an awesome deal. But still, at the end of the day, uh, in twenty-four, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do things a bit different. And what I'm saying about that, when we make deals with people, I, I just think sometimes they need to come here to the board and, and, where we all can see what's going on. Don't get me wrong, I think it's awesome deal, uh, in-kind supportive marketing. All of this dealing with county events, like rodeo, the sheriff events, and all that, is that a county event?
Not a technically county event, the sheriff rodeo, uh.
Well.
But, but like, you know, like October president of county.
To keep us, to keep us on the same page, could we get a list of the county events? So we can say, well, you do something over here, do something over here, do something over here, and.
Now, I think that makes sense, and we can make sure the money goes to specific events and the board's heard of that.
And the most important thing we need to do, when it come to, uh, that, that place over there, is the county. Is. Spending a whole lot of money over there, and. We need to find a way to get some of the money back that, that, that events happen over there where some of this money can come back to the county. Do everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I, I asked that question last time, who gets the gate every time you have a sport, sport event? Some of them, they got a gate, yeah, they, we should be getting percentage of the help pay for some.
I'm kinda got to rethink, let me see, some kinda way. And it just my, uh. Thought mine is, I know don't get two schools really use it, but we need to get with them and, and, and figure out a way where. The county can reap some benefits from all this money that taxpayers money that we done spent. And, uh, I don't have a problem with it, like I said, I think it's a great deal. And, but the only problem I see is still the dressing room, we gonna have to find a way to address that, because we can't have a state-of-the-art. Facility with a dressing room, still have mobiles and stuff like that in.
And, and, uh, Mr. President, that's something that one of the supervisors actually asked it, I made it, you Ricky. We couldn't get an exact estimate for the locker room, so, but I talked with both the contractor and the, uh, engineer. And I've got an amount that we might see that we could get more fruit on.
We don't put that amount out there, man, cause we got contracts, see amount, and they bid all the way up to the amount that they see, they go a little bit over.
Yeah.
Well, I was also hoping we could, uh, maybe get, uh, the school district, the teams that play there. To, uh, maybe chip in on that, so the county doesn't have to handle that whole amount.
He go kiss the dickens, Chris, number one school use the, uh, uh, to my knowledge, number one youth school use that.
Cathedral none use it.
I do Cathedral use, Cathedral don't use, so it would need to try to get Cathedral to chip in on something that they don't use.
Maybe we get the.
But when they start using it, it's state.
But you got a great idea, I think, uh, we need to get in contact with the school, just because if we plan on utilizing that thing like. As Supervisor Milton said, bringing in tournaments and doing all that, it's gonna have to have someone, somebody can get dressed.
So if the board wants to set that amount, and certainly can, we, but we need to do something to ask people for what they're gonna pay for, I mean, that amount.
Yeah, we can do that, but we don't want it all in the public, that amount, because if you do that, Scott, it's just like all these other projects we doing. They gonna bid a little bit under, uh, a little bit over, and we ain't gonna be able to get nothing done.
We need to get beds, cause, well, we get two beds, cause they're gonna run over their mouth, they'll, you know, for bidding price anyway. So, that price for two, you know, beds.
So we have to bid that up?
You, you got to have it. You got to ask them that, you know?
Could we start to do that?
Yeah, we.
All.
Already know them to give us the answer, you know? I mean, y'all have a mountain to see, well, should be seen.
Okay, this.
Should be pretty good, y'all are okay with that.
This started with the score, scoreboard deal, uh, are we gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to.
To exert.
Contract Coca-Cola.
Second.
Uh, any by Mr. Milton, second by Ms. Hutchins, any more discussion on that?
A whole other discussion, I think somebody need to contact these other people and, 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 after we, uh. Enter into a contract with Coca-Cola, but I guess that it's serious, it's no money.
I think, uh, Ms. Washington can handle that, okay, uh.
Wait, wait, can I, can I go back? I won't, can I, can I amend that motion, I get, I get some care of the motion, but I like to amend it to make sure that we incorporated like Supervisor Gray into this contract that the county events, we just start the county events also.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, and I think there needs to be a running spreadsheet on if we get fifty cases, ten cases what to do, so we know what's available, what's, what's been used, I think it needs to be alive.
Okay, uh, no more discussion, uh, put it to the vote, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Go.
I'm not.
Okay, I, I didn't know he had something to say about something.
What's he to? Uh, the only other thing I want to talk about is, uh, Mr. Donald presented sixteen E W P sites that, that were gonna be submitted. Um, I think a tremendous amount of the financial burden on this county is due to E W P spending over the years. And I just wanna, we talked about this in the past couple of years, and I just wanna make it clear that moving forward, any E W P that does not affect the county road or a county. That concludes my.
Yeah, but, uh, Mr. President, I, I did, I did something, uh. I have been in talks, uh, with, um. Rodeos are really big around here, a lot of participants, uh, do youth rodeos. Uh, I have been contacted, they're trying to put another youth rodeo organization, uh, back in the community, and, uh, they asked a call, asked for a donation, and I told them, probably. Uh, monetary donation was done, but they are trying to have a board, and, uh, uh, we gonna have a total mixed board, some of Mr. Donald, some of Mitch family. Larry Brown, some of his family, a former mayor, Butch Brown, Larry Brown, that they're gonna be there, so they are trying to have six youth rodeos and finals over there. So they, uh, asked about the facility, we are, we are going, so I don't know, starting off, they are trying to, uh, do it, so I told them I would ask, uh. They were wanting to donate, I would say, um, for youth rodeos, only if they provide insurance, could we provide the arena, arena. Uh, to them, but for our part of the donation to help the youth rodeo, uh, go off their feet, because they wanna have five rodeos, and. They gonna try to raise money, that they're gonna give away prizes, they gonna have five rodeos and finals. So we will definitely have, uh, a constant update on it, because you'll have, uh, some folks that's sitting on the board, that's involved, they're beating it, so you'll know how it's going. Uh, and it's not, uh, nobody, uh, gaining any money, uh, no one person gaining any money, it is strictly with the understanding. That they are making donations, but they're trying to get the kids nice prices, and so you don't have to vote on it today, uh, cause they're not all the way there, but I do want to bring it to the board. Uh, and bring it up, because they're setting it together, and I, and I, and I was just wondering if the board would be willing to donate them for the start of their first year of Adams County Rodeo Association.
So, are they, are they asking us to donate the arena?
Well, they were asking for a monetary donation, they were asking for a monetary donation, but I know the shape that we in, and we always said that, you know. If you're not on a donation list, we not taking any donation, so, uh, with them doing it, and strictly doing a youth rodeo for the kids, and. And so they talking about, I mean, like, Rob and a lot of other folks, they go different places, so you talking about bringing a bunch of other people in to grow, uh, this for our youth, and, uh. So. I just wanted to just put it out there to see, uh, once they get everything together, and they'll, uh, have a, all of them have a first board meeting and see how things are gonna go, it's asking. So we can't give a monetary donation, so I was gonna ask that we donate the arena, uh, or let, uh, put it out here so we can think, and once they get on the board, they can bring back and ask what they need.
He in contact with me about being on the board, we travel three weekends a month, pretty much, and more and over, cause he, we talk rodeo all the time, you know, we just got back last Friday, got back Sunday night, the Friday before, got back Sunday night. We, we run three, four weekends a month now, and it's youth rodeos all over the south, and that's pretty much what some of these arenas do, like we do, Chris Shippers, with Professor Bull Rider, he gonna make his arena. For association, we run in there, we run in, uh, West Louisiana down in St. Francisville, that arena's done just for the youth. Uh, we just come out of Ruston, we come out of Brandon the week before, um, and that's what they do, the association get together, and the, normally the counties will let them, or cities or whatever, let them have the arena for the weekend. Um, you know, for that, but like I said, it's no money being made, you know, you pay for the stock, you pay for the hit, you know, somebody comes in, does concessions. But for making money, I'm not in, and that's what I told him, I made that clear before everyone got involved, I said, it will not be any money made, bars is, I don't wanna be involved.
Okay, I don't like what you have, okay, uh, who's, who's gonna clean up afterwards, and if you're gonna run, run light bill and water bills up, out there probably, uh, in, in, you know, sort of. We're just gonna, uh, so when they say donate, I mean, you spend a lot of money out there, y'all did a heck of a job out there.
Was a pimp.
They donated.
Well, what, but.
Yeah, help your kids.
Yeah, I was gonna support you, no, but what, what, uh, uh, I'm not there, but most of the time, uh, when they say youth rodeo association. Um, youth rodeo association just don't consist of rodeoing, it actually consists of, uh, an organization, most of the time you'll have. Somebody have a, a positive word, a speaker, somebody, it's community, serves the youth rodeo association, well, actually not, it would be a help to the arena, because it's not only do you have a rodeo. You gonna have kids that come out there, they gonna help clean up, you gonna give them responsibilities, it's not just gonna be.
I, I'm never getting involved in.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, that's, it's, it's, uh, it's more or less, it's a rodeo association, but also a structured part of it also.
Yes.
Mr. President, uh, I, I was coming from somewhere on a plane, I was sitting outside this young lady, and all of a sudden. I saw something on the phone with horses, I was like, you ride horses? She had a horses train right here out of county, I don't know where she from, but maybe long story short, we got some smart. I don't know where she from, but maybe long story short, we got some smart kid academic-wise. We got some football, basketball, baseball player. We got cheerleader, but I'm not a rodeo man. But this is the biggest thing going now is rodeoing. Everywhere you go, somebody got an arena and it attracts so many people. So whatever we can do as a county legally, we need to be on board. Because guess what, when the sheriff have his, you see the turnout? Just imagine you got this for kids. And it's gonna be amazing.
Anything to get used outside, and I play on phones.
Get someone four hundred, show up at Brandon, show up at us, four kids over four hundred.
Well, Mr. President, I'm gonna end this, and I'm gonna say this. Uh, I, I, I go to a lot of events with kids, and that's their main concern, that we don't have nothing for kids to do. We used to have places where they could go in the gym and have, uh, basketball leagues. We don't even have that no more. I think they still have a small amount of baseball if they haven't took, taken it all across the river, across the river, getting everything. So we, we need to step our game up and accompany these kids. We, we can't say we wanna save our kids when it ain't nothing for them to do. So if it's anything dealing with helping the kids, I'm one hundred percent in it. If we have to donate ourselves.
Okay, um, we have, most of them for us is what this whole... And you're, you're pending, I'm gonna do my report because I need to have a dance appointment. And then, uh, I'm gonna let Mr. Milton take over. Uh, uh, those gentlemen stepped out, uh, we have a, a hire for the, uh, um, correctional juvenile detention centers. Dominic Richard, uh, pay rate change. No, it's a new hire, I'm sorry. Twelve dollars an hour, annual rate of twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. I need a motion to approve this. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, uh, in this slate, travel, uh, I need a motion to approve travel for, uh, I'm gonna do both of these, James, Ricky Gray, and Angela Hutchins to Washington.
That's all we've been, you just need to sign. Just you sign.
Y'all need to sign.
You not going?
I'm still figuring, figuring out why my paperwork hasn't come in, but it's, it is working. Okay, and I've got a request from, uh, um... From Danny Barber, the, the new judge, Justice Court Judge. And, uh, he's requesting a new phone and a computer desktop screen larger than twenty-six inches. And I, I don't know if it's in his budget or not. Is it in his budget, Ms. Washington, or Randy, I mean, I do?
Sure.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll make this motion if, if pending that it is in his budget.
Someone's did.
Well, I guess we can pull and see if it's in his budget first. If not, he's gotta fill out.
We need to fill out that one.
Question. If it's not in his budget.
Something aside, this side to you.
I don't like it.
This side to you, so what?
No, I'm talking about all this, once we got the budget, I, I don't like bringing all this other stuff in 'cause we already in the gym, but just, that's another thing.
Well, you're on, make a motion pending.
No, I ain't got a problem, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion, uh, pending, uh, there you have the finances in his budget.
All right, so, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, turn this meeting over to, uh, Mr. Milton when he gets back. Uh, but we can continue around. My report is, you know, I obviously congratulated the sheriff on capturing those guys and the marshals and the National Police Department, everybody involved in that, uh, awesome. And everybody that fought this cold weather and helped out in it, Robbie in your, your department, Sheriff's Department, um, nine eleven, uh, everybody that was involved in that. The, uh, Scott, on the airport, uh, repainting the runways. We are gonna go ahead and get a contractor to repaint the runways. And we are going to have to make a call on the bond or what on JKS.
Okay, so the last way I left it with the airport director, he was supposed to get a estimate on the cost of it fixed. I'll circle back with him to see if he did that. I've been in contact with him to tell him to get a date of when they can start work on that estimate.
Okay. All right, um, okay, well, uh, that concludes my report because I need to take off. Uh, thank y'all, and, uh, y'all in these exercises, I'm hyped for that. Mr. Milton? I'll leave it for a moment. Thank y'all. Yeah, I'm gonna get outside, I know, I know I need it.
Ms. Lewis, did you have anything?
I do. Um, I need to get approval for DIFCO data, sends out our notices for tax deduction. And they have an annual contract, the contract is the same.
Oh, yeah.
We have to have it spread across the minutes.
You heard the request, change your clerk.
So...
Motion by supervisor Gaines.
Say.
Seconded by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
If you have the December tax deduction settlement spread across the minutes, please.
Heard the request, change your clerk. Motion by supervisor Gaines.
Say.
Seconded by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
What, what was that?
The tax deduction settlement required to spread it across the minutes for state audit purposes. It just, just shows what was, uh, collected, what was issued to each of the departments as well as to the county based on understanding the tax settlement, not from the collector, just from the change.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Aye.
Um, we had payroll order that, uh, the president did in his folder. It is from, um, Southwest PDB. It is just the economic development job report that they were required to provide. We have one for Delta Energy and James Lumber. And just need to have it spread across the minutes, please.
Okay, so, motion by supervisor Gaines, can I get your second?
Second.
Seconded by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye.
We have the certificates for each of the board members, um, for the inspection of the roads. So we just need to have it spread across the minutes. So...
Okay, motion by supervisor Hutchins, seconded by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye.
The last thing I have are the February bond manuals to be spread across the minutes for Christie Kelly, Mary Ann Anderson, and Xavier Hawkins.
Your request, you will change your clerk to have bonds spread across the minutes. I get a motion, motion by supervisor Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by supervisor Gray.
Question?
Any discussion?
Have they went up on bond, uh, is the same thing?
No, so some of them are annual bonds, that's why some of them look higher than others. And some of them are annual bonds, some of them are term bonds.
Okay.
'Cause some of them are a year, some of them are four years.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Schlover.
It'll take, uh, nine months, that too young for a rodeo there?
They, they train them up. And Ms. Washington, did you have anything?
So, uh, I had, you have a confirmation for the, what's the weather, on the day of the management director. We need to lay closing on Friday at seven o'clock. And then we were closed Tuesday and Wednesday, and I related information to the department. And then the second item that I had was request from Judge Blackwell. Um, the previous pay orders that were presented at the first board meeting of the month for Calway, Fleming, Fraser, and Simmons. And then also a policy revision for the public defenders, which, um, Lumber and I have done a budget amendment, um, to make those.
Yeah, that just needs to be spread across the minutes, the proclamation.
The governor declared it a state of emergency. Technically not, but this would be good for a minute. Knowing that we get certain things under emergency status that approves this funding.
You heard the request, the county administrator. Motion by supervisor Hutchins, can I get your second?
I'll second.
Seconded by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye. Is that it, all you have, Ms. Washington?
Um, yes, the jury, uh, TV needs a pay order approved for, um, the first board meeting.
So that she'd sent over, both the circuit judges had sent over pay orders on their staff, 'cause there's been some staff changes. The increase of the amount, AOC, uh, went from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand per judge. And so Judge Drake's amount, because it stayed the same, there's increases on Judge Blackwell's. Uh, one of them is because a new attorney came on and had more years of experience. So AOC says, person without years of experience is paid this pay level. And then the other is with her administrative assistant, uh, was getting additional more money, but still not up to that AOC level or whatever.
You say it's not up to the AOC level?
It's still not, it's still...
Okay.
It will not net, it won't be an increase for this year because we've been charged less by AOC. Uh, and I guess I should back up, I'm getting confused. For the judge's staff, the AOC pays their salaries and so forth up to a certain amount and then charges the county based on resolutions and court orders of how much that deficiency is. So AOC has been basically charging us less since June or July, since the beginning of the year. And so we, we'll have money in this fiscal year to, to make ends meet. In fact, because if there's an increase in public defenders, we're able to kind of pull from that, that amount or is more than enough, we'll pull from that particular amount. So for this year, it won't be overall increase.
So is this increase gonna come on the county or AOC?
Well, AOC is already paying us more. Uh, they still will not pay us, we'll still have a deficiency from AOC. But the overall deficiency will be less than last year, if that makes sense.
Ain't no we can do about it.
Is it all?
It's ordered, but the board still has to go through.
I understand, ain't nothing we can do about it. If we didn't have the money in the budget, we had to go borrow it.
Right. And, and, and we have a budget. But I've also asked the other board attorneys if they would, yeah, Judge Blackwell particularly works out of Franklin and Amen and Adam. So I asked Amen and Adam, I'm sorry, Amen and Franklin, if they'll go have season with us on this increase too. They haven't responded back, but I've asked those two counties to help offset the deficiency. I felt like that was best, ask them first and then ask the judge to move it, say anything, I don't care.
Got a motion by supervisor Gaines, can I get your second? Seconded, seconded by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye.
I think that's for report, I don't...
Does that conclude your report, Ms. Washington?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, this time I need a motion.
Give me a number, how much a meal is worth?
Approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars per Mrs. Countywide now.
Yeah, fair.
Yeah, approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Thank you. Need a motion, uh, for either big time. Motion by supervisor Hutchins, seconded by supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye.